I will call this regular Township Council meeting of December 21st, 2021 to order at 7:00 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law, by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 22nd, 2020, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2020. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net. Would you all join me in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Ms. Graniani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, business administrator Fred Carr, Township Attorney Jim Lott, and Township Clerk Coled Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, January 5th, 2022, that's a Wednesday, at 6:30 PM will be the reorganization meeting, and the council agenda meeting will be following that. Our regular meeting is January 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Approval of minutes? Motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Just for the record, these are the minutes from 8:321, 8:1721, 9:721, 9:2121, 10:0521, 4:0621, 4:2021, 5:321, and 5:0721. That's just for the record.
Thank you, Council President. Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Graniani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, presentations. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Okay, so, the total number of COVID cases in Parsippany is 5,436. That's an increase of 189 cases in the past week. Deaths overall, 118 lab confirmed, 63 at home, 55 in facilities. Now, the Omicron variant now accounts for about 73% of COVID cases across the country. It's the most transmissible variant of COVID-19 we've seen to date. It's not going away anytime soon. It's just going to become a normal part of our everyday lives. But we have the tools to prevent spread and harm to our friends, neighbors, and people we care about. Wear a mask, practice social distancing, avoid tight crowding, ventilate indoor spaces, and wash your hands whenever possible. I was looking at the CDC website last night. For the unvaccinated, okay, these numbers are as of this past Monday. 451 people catch the virus per 100,000 people, okay? So that's 451. At the same ratio of 100,000 people vaccinated, 134 people catch it per 100,000. So it drops from 451 to 134, just simply by vaccination. For booster shots, if you get the booster, it's 48 per 100,000. So that's 451 for 100,000 that are unvaccinated, and when you're fully boosted and vaccinated, it drops to 48. Numbers don't lie. So vaccinations in Parsippany as of the 17th of December, one shot, 88% of Parsippany residents have had at least one shot. That's up from 85% just a month ago. Nearly every Parsippany resident age 65 and over have at least one shot. Fully vaccinated. This data does not include boosters. Over 79% of Parsippany residents have been fully vaccinated, up from 77% just a month ago. Over 99% of residents aged 65 have been fully vaccinated. This is within the margin of error. So look, bottom line is, talk to your doctor about getting vaccinated. I've said this many times. Don't listen to politicians. Don't listen to celebrities or sports stars. The only person you should really consult and talk to about getting vaccinated is your doctor. That's the best advice you're going to get. Town Hall will be closed this week for Thursday and Friday in observance of Christmas, so that's December 23rd and 24th for the Christmas holiday. This building will reopen to the public on Monday, December 27th, at regular business hours, and we hope everyone has a happy and festive and safe Christmas. The town planner calendar, for 2022 is in the mail. Something you hear a lot, checks in the mail, so is the calendar. Now, next year's town calendar should begin to hit mailboxes this week. That's what they're promising us. In the meantime, you can find the electronic copy of next year on the township website, parcipani.net. Now, the Parsippany Green Team is leading Christmas lights recycling program. If you have holiday lights that burn out or stop working over time, and many of you probably do, you'd probably just throw them out instead of properly recycling them. But holiday lights are recyclable, they have a minimum value, but recycling them offers a more environmentally friendly option than throwing them in the trash where they end up in a landfill. And that winds up raising our tipping fees for disposing garbage anyway, so it's good to get rid of these in a proper way. The Parsippany Green Team will pick up the lights and ensure they are recycled properly. You can drop off these holiday lights at the Parsippany Recycling Center or at the PAL Building during regular business hours. For more information on this program, please go to parcipanigreenteam.com. Now, JCPL is doing a line clearance and tree trimming, which begins in February. Now, it's going to begin on or about February 22nd. JCPL and contractors will be performing line clearance and tree trimming in our community along the company's right-of-way. This work will include the routine trimming of limbs to provide four years of clearance from electric wires and removal of limbs overhanging the subtransmission lines. All tree removals are performed in accordance with JCPL's easement rights or otherwise with the written consent of the property owner. Now, with the winter coming, and it's slowly rolling in, it's more important than ever to be prepared for emergency situations at a moment's notice. Thanks to Alert Parsippany, residents can stay up to date with important notifications delivered right to your mobile phone. The Parsippany Police Department uses the service to send official, real-time alerts to the public regarding local emergencies, road closures, and much more. Alert Parsippany is free, secure, and only takes a few minutes to sign up. You can sign up now by going to parcipani.net/alert. So, this is my last meeting as mayor, and as my tenure as mayor draws to a close at the end of this month. And I've been looking back, and I reflect that what an honor it's been over these past four years to be your mayor. It's been a privilege to lead the community I have called home for 20 years. I look back on my time in office with joy and accomplishment. At the height of the COVID-19 pandemic and economic downturn, my administration fed hundreds of families with food every week. I got to see the faces of appreciation and know that the work we did made a difference in families' lives. On public safety, we outfitted our police department with body cams. We completed and the part of erecting a state-of-the-art communication tower and worked to get the force accredited as an accredited police department. For housing, we kept new developments in check, negotiating to honor affordable housing requirements while reducing mandatory developments from nearly 3,000 units down to 1,300 units, and finally just down to 859 units total. 3,000 down to 859, we got it negotiated down to. For economic development and echo responsibility, we completed the township's first-ever master plan since 1976. We re-entered the Highlands Council for the first time in township history and achieved bronze status through environmental stewardship through Sustainable New Jersey. We implemented a plastic bag ban, and thanks to this council for voting unanimously for it and for introducing the bag ban. This pushed the state to do its own bag ban, and you council members led the way on that for the state. You should be proud of that. We are exploring new solar paneling and efficiency standards for our sewers and wastewater treatment. These are things that will save us taxpayer money down the line and make us more efficient. We embraced Parsippany's rich diversity through celebration. We raised the Indian flag in honor of Indian Independence Day. We brought back the July 4th fireworks safely during the pandemic in 2021, and we raised the Italian flag for the Italian Food and Culture Festival during the week and weekend around Columbus Day. And we raised the pride flag for the entire month of June. We look to build the largest park in Parsippany with the nearly completed acquisition of the Cozit property. This is a project that's been going on for many decades through many, many mayors and many administrations. And we assisted in the groundbreaking of the Boot and Reservoir Trails Project, both of which will open up incredible open space and passive recreation opportunities for residents. We secured funds to beautify North Beverly Road and rebuild and funds to rebuild a new library in Lake Hiawatha. Soon, I'm going to rejoin the ranks of private citizen. And as such, I wish my successor the best of luck in his term ahead. I hope he does everything he can to honor all Parsippany residents and is guided by doing what's right for this community. Whatever political ideology you ascribe to, one thing we can all agree on, Parsipony truly is the place to be. I will leave Town Hall with my head held high, reminded each and every day how many residents have touched my life and how many memories I have here. While this chapter may close for now, I promise I will continue to be an active member of our township. When I became an elected public servant, it changed me. The desire to help my neighbors live their best lives has become a deeply personal pursuit, and I hope each and every one of you can join me in this pursuit for all of us. When our community works together as a team, as neighbors, as friends, I believe that anything and everything is possible. Ralph Waldo Emerson said, "Cultivate the habit of being grateful for every good thing that comes to you and give thanks continuously." And because all things have contributed to your advancement, you should include all things in your gratitude. Thank you, Parsipony, and may God continue to bless you all. Mr. Council President, that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Under Township Council, we're going to be making a presentation to Janice and Emily. We being the Republicans on the council. We'll make brief statements now, then I would like us to go forward to the microphone there with Janice and Emily and family, and we will make the presentations up there. I will start off. These are brief comments. For the past four years, the Township Council has worked together in a bipartisan effort to do what we felt was in the best interest of Parsipony. We enjoyed working together. The Republican council members, Loretta Graniani, Paul Karifi, and myself, would like to present these certificates of appreciation to Janice McCarthy and Emily Peterson for your four years of service to Parsipony. Loretta?
Yes. Four years ago, our all Republican council was changed with the election of two Democratic women, Janice McCarthy and Emily Peterson. Were there concerns on the minds of some, if Republicans and Democrats could work together, those concerns never happened. Council made decisions regardless of our political beliefs, only what was best for our township and its residents. Emily, thank you for your work as council liaison to several township committees. Janice, your background in finance has been helpful not only to our council but to me. Thank you for the two years we served together as members of our Township Finance Committee. Adam and I wish you both a blessed Christmas and a happy and safe New Year's. Ladies, job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what Mike and Loretta said, you know. It truly has been an honor and a privilege to work with you guys, and it hasn't mattered, you know, who's Republican, who's Democrat. I think we all worked together to do what was best for the town, and that's, you know, that's the way it should be. And, yeah, I'm going to miss working with you guys. And it really, again, it really has been an honor working with you guys. And thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go up to the front microphone. Stand next to Janice? Okay, Janice, on behalf of the Republicans, thank you very much for your service. Emily, also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys want to say?
I do my notes. Well, you go first. Janice, you want to go first?
Oh, go ahead.
I want to take this opportunity to thank the residents of Parsipony for trusting me over the last four years. I have learned more in this experience than I ever could have in a formal education, and for that, I am deeply grateful. I hope you look back on my tenure and see someone who worked with the best interests of the town at the center of all of my decisions. I want to also thank my council colleagues here for the debate and the progress that we've made together. I think we are truly models for what is possible when smart people care deeply about the decisions in front of them. Janice, you are my friend and will remain near and dear to me as a mentor and a confidant. Thank you. And finally, a very special thank you to my family who are here tonight, without whom I could not have been in this arena at all. I want to acknowledge my husband and my son's sacrifices, as these have allowed me to pursue the public service that we all believe worthy of sharing, their partner and their mom. I wish the incoming administration the very best, and I am looking forward to my own future as a private resident in the town. Thank you.
Well, you know, I realized that this day was coming, but I didn't realize how difficult it would be. But I feel lucky that I've been part of something that made it so difficult. I truly appreciate the support from my colleagues, and I'm proud of what we've accomplished. As I've said to Council President DePiero, I think we were a very good council. We agreed and disagreed, but always respectfully. We started as strangers and we ended as friends. What could be better than that? It's been my honor to have served with all of you on council. Coled, thank you so much for the needed guidance and friendship, making my time on council pleasant and easier. And of course, I'm not sure how I would have gotten through not only these past years without the constant love and support from my husband Joe, and let me add his patience, which he needed a lot of. And importantly, through these years, there was Emily, Councilmember Peterson. With her wisdom, her humor, badly needed at times, someone I could always confide in and rely on, and thankfully, given the most valuable gift, is her friendship. I especially want to thank the residents for giving me the opportunity and their trust to serve on council, and let me wish the new administration and the new council the very best going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And to remain consistent, Mayor Soriano, thank you for your four years of service. And not knowing what the new administration is going to bring, Mr. Carr, thank you for your service. I don't know if it's going to continue, but good luck on that. And also, our Township Attorney, Mr. Lott, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have to say one more thing. Thank you, Loretta, for when I missed my turn. Giving me a nudge. I appreciate that.
Okay, moving on, Township Attorney. Anything?
I'm trying to keep it short. We have no closed session tonight.
That's a good thing.
It is a good thing. Let me first take the opportunity to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope that next year is healthy and prosperous for everyone. Happy holidays to all. It was a great honor to have been able to represent the township for the last four years, and I want to thank Mayor Soriano and all the members of council who supported me in that effort. And I also want to thank the incredible, hard-working staff, department directors, division directors, statutory officers of the township. As Township Attorney, I dealt with them on a very regular basis, and you have a fine collection of people who work on behalf of the township, and as I said, it was a great honor to have been able to serve for four years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Thank you. Council President, not to throw a blanket on the congratulations here, just to tell the council and the public that we at 10 o'clock this morning initiated mandatory masks in the Town Hall in the common areas. We've got some COVID positivity cases upstairs and downstairs. Nobody's sick that we know of, but with the rise of the Omicron and within Town Hall, obviously, it's reaching us at 10 o'clock this morning. I said, "All right, Town Hall's still open, but back to your masks unless you're in the common area, hallways, council chambers, break rooms, bathrooms, things like that."
Okay. Thank you. Township Clerk?
Yeah, I just want to thank Emily and Janice for their service, and it was a pleasure working with you guys these past years, and a pleasure working with the council as a whole in a bipartisan manner. It was very refreshing to see that, so thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure, and I look forward to your friendship for years to come.
But I could not have done this job without you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Township Officers, Committees, Reports. Since most of the committees are on hold, hopefully, we get back in 2022 and get active again with all of our committees. There's no correspondence except we have two reports, a debt service report and a year-end summary revenues and appropriations. Mr. Carr, do you want to summarize that for the record or just leave it on the paperwork?
No, they're provided to the council as required by statute, just sort of basically telling the state of the township's finances as required by law.
Okay, thank you. Bids taken, 12221, well-developed services wells 13 and 21. Also taken, 121721, Craftsman Farms Lock House Kitchen Restoration and Annex Rehabilitation. Bids to be taken, 12622, pump station number four, gravity conversion project. Now, I will entertain a motion to open to the public.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Graniani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Flown us open to the public.
Can anyone make come forward? You have five minutes to speak. Sign in, state your name and address.
Ms. Peterson?
Julia Peterson?
Coled?
It's not on, Coled. Maybe they can fix that issue. Yeah, let's see if we can fix that next year. Is it there? No. Yep, there it is. Some things never change. Julia Peterson, Parsippany Road. I have three things. The first, I want to pay tribute to a resident who died last week, who I associate with this room, although she never served in elective office, Mary Ann Hoseg, who died very quickly and peaceably, but was, I don't think, any council meeting I came to, she was here, like, right there. And I think that must have been a habit formed in legal women voters. She was definitely council watch person. If you want to know what was going on, you could always ask her. And without prejudice, she'd tell you. She didn't have a bias about what she said. The second thing is, I just want to say in public that the maybe, hopefully, final hearing on the 90-foot or 60-foot sign, lighted billboard sign, will be February 2nd in the Board of Adjustment. It's a special meeting. I think maybe they're going to finally get, we've been at four hearings so far in which evidence trickles in. The people that live in Hills of Troy, and we are really hoping that we aren't going to have this in our front yards. And I know the Board of Adjustment will decide, but I just wanted to say that. And the third thing is, we really, as the former chair of the Democratic Committee for a long while in the early part of this century, I want to pay tribute to the job that Janice and Emily did. We feel that the council was wonderful, and Loretta, too. You know, it's just great to have three women on council. I think it's certainly, not to prejudice against the men on council, who are also wonderful, but certainly, council meetings became kind of peaceful, and I don't know whether that was it or not. It was wonderful, and we want to thank you for your service as members of the community and friend and relative, so, thank you. Oh, thank you so much.
Oh, beautiful. Lovely.
Thank you so much, Julie.
That's lovely. Thank you. Thank you. You are too sweet. Thank you.
How beautiful.
Very nice.
Yeah?
Yeah, of course.
Good evening. My name is Brian Alvarez. I work for Jake Otomond Recovery, and I'm their senior account supervisor. I worked here for five years, and I've devoted my life to public safety. On countless times, I've assisted the Parsippany Fire Department and other departments in extensive vehicle extrication training. Saving lives and helping people is my life calling, and it's in my bloodline. Things forever changed on August 16th, 2021, when an incident occurred at my place of employment with a customer named Barry Allenwood. On that day, Allenwood clearly caused a disturbance and invaded my privacy through wiretapping and just being there for six hours, all to ultimately make a racial episode that has caught a lot of attention. I'm here tonight not to make excuses for the actions of any one individual. The incident that took place was a complete circus from the time I received my first phone call from Mr. Elowen, who then fabricated a story to the state police to prompt the call from them to Mr. Elowen coming to our office and inciting a racist incident. I was called names by Mr. Elowen. He called me Trumpkin Pie. He then asked if I wanted him to bring me lunch because I was looking kind of hungry, insinuating... insinuating that because of my size, I wanted food. At no time did I ever treat Allenwood any different from any other customer. Pay your bill, and you could do whatever you'd like with your vehicle. He then made another phone call to the state police, saying that there was an altercation taking place. But again, that was fabricated. Mr. Allenwood came to a Jaco Towing with the intentions of creating a problem. He clearly felt he should not have paid anything and was entitled to do what he pleased. We gave him his other set of keys that were in his wreck car, so, and he said he'd be back to pay the bill or remove his vehicle. He then showed up hours later and waited outside for the police to come. When they arrived, they spoke Mr. Allenwood. Then they came and spoke with myself and the property owner, Mr. Cleffy, about how we could resolve this situation. I told the officer that he made prior claims that we were only making him pay his bill because he is black. During this time, while the Parsippany Police were there for 45 minutes, the situation became heated, and the officers were asked several times to remove Mr. Allenwood from our property. The police did nothing to de-escalate the situation and actually asked me several times to get Mr. Cleffy, the property owner, back inside the building. After the situation took place, a video was put on social media that sparked the mayor to use his power to have the towing contract terminated from a Jaco Towing and released a statement that a Jaco and its employees condoned racism. I do not condone racism. The harassment that I have personally received and the questions from my own family members, including my 10 and 13-year-old niece, who are Mexican and Guatemalan-American, asking my sister and my mother if Uncle Brian is racist, is appalling. This is all stemmed from the statement by Mayor Soriano. I have been verbally attacked by the people that come into a Jaco because of the color of my skin, being called cracker, honky, fat boy, amongst other things that I will not say here. I personally do not believe in racial guilt, and I am strongly against racism of any kind and anyone that incites a racist incident to try and benefit themselves, including the mayor of Parsippany. But as, but as the people, but as the people of this great town of Parsippany have spoken through their vote, the mayor will no longer be able to continue to destroy this town with this unethical rhetoric. You have defamed my name because I am tied to this company. You have made your statement with a reckless disregard for truth, and I will not sit quietly by without saying what is needed to be said, and I will fight for everyone's right to have to deal with this disgusting display of politics. I was brought up only to judge one by their actions, not by the color of their skin, and to have a race-baiter label myself and the place I work for as a group of racists who condone racism is uncalled for and threatening to my values I live by my life. These actions caused my stress level to rise and contemplation in seeking employment at a new company. But when I have gone for job interviews, my values have been questioned because of the statement issued by the mayor's office and my current employment at a Jaco. My only saving grace has been that these interviews, I've explained what has happened, and that they have all said the same thing. We deal with incidents like this all the time. And the fact that I have made a name for myself in the towing industry and my abilities to do my job at hand. In closing, I will not be kept quiet, and I will not be looking, I will not back down until I get what is right. Mary Soriano, you, sir, have made racist comments and are part of the problem in this country in keeping racism alive by trying to use it to politically benefit yourself instead of using your political powers to better the community and really caring about the minorities. What do I request or what am I looking for here tonight? I'm seeking a public apology for Mayor Soriano's actions. The apology is warranted along with a retraction that a statement put in the news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Counsel, I'm Paul Argen, and just as on September 4th and September 21st, I'm going to ask council president for an accommodation to my disability.
What does that mean?
According to the American Disabilities Act, I'm requesting an accommodation as prior, do you recall?
An accommodation meaning more time?
No, an accommodation meaning that you just don't need any contentious interruptions.
Okay.
I will let you know when you have one minute left.
Thank you. Thank you. If I just publicly just want to ask permission to approach.
For the record, before you begin, I was handed by Mr. Argen a notice of tort claim at this particular point, which I will hand over to the township attorney.
I'm just going to keep this short and sweet. It's a tort claim form by individuals from a Jaco Towing. I want to say, as chief compliance officer of a Jaco Towing, in no way, shape, or form did we encourage Brian Alvarez to approach tonight. He came up here in his own individual capacity. He did approach us this morning, and he let us know what he was, wanted to say, and we did listen to what he wanted to say, and we allow any individuals to do it. But keeping in the holiday spirit, just want to let the town council know, just a quick update. On December 9th, 2021, there was a thorough investigation was concluded, signed off by the chief of police, Cantina, and Detective George Tapetus. And it's clear from the police report that the established business owner nor anybody at a Jaco Towing are guilty of any crimes. There was never any hate crimes. There was a suspicious bias incident because of a racial slur that was used after six hours of being preyed upon. And the mayor made a, the use of the public information office in total disregard to the county prosecutor's determination that there was no hate crime. But after 104 days, the police department finally made a final report. And in fact, the final report specifically said that Mr. Cleffy acted cordial. And there was eight hours of tapes that we've asked and we begged the town council and the town attorney and anybody and everybody who took an interest in just attacking the company. And the company has suffered. It's not a, it's not a happy holiday season, but we'd love to make it a happy holiday season. There's a lot of employees involved. And just as Brian Alvarez has just spoken, I'm going to conclude with the same thing, that the mayor has labeled this 27-year-old business as racist. It's time that the statement gets publicly retracted, hopefully before he leaves office. He used the altercation to promote his intolerance of hate crimes as an election point, yet there was no crime. And he knew there was no crime as determined 24 hours earlier. And it took 104 days of major suffering of this 24, 27-year-old company. Thank you, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Same to you. Anyone else wish to speak?
The crazy cat people are back. I just wanted to, first, Janice, Emily, thank you for your service. Good luck to you both. I just wanted to fill you in on what's been happening. There's been a few things that we've gone through since the last time we were here.
Excuse me, could you please come forward and use the microphone? Thank you.
I don't want to be too close, but, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, is this better?
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
So, anyway, on December 16th, we appeared before Judge Scala in municipal court regarding the cats. He hasn't made a determination of probable cause yet, but his recommendation to us was that he had no jurisdiction over animal control, even though filing a complaint and going through the municipal court was what we were told to do by the mayor's office and according to the ordinance. So, we're a little confused in that regard. Anyway, he claims he has no probable cause or no jurisdiction over animal control, can't tell animal control what to do. He agrees that it's an unacceptable living situation. He agrees that it's unsanitary and unsafe for the community to be living in this situation. The caregivers also appeared before the judge on December 16th. One of the caregivers is in the hospital and appeared from his hospital room. They both told the judge that they can't take care of these cats anymore, but animal control is not taking them. I'm here, I wanted to fill you in on that, but I also want, we're putting it back on you, in other words. The judge can't do anything for us. All he can do is tell the caregivers, stop feeding them. And if you don't stop feeding them, we're going to fine you. Well, they can fine the caregivers every day between now until next year, whether they pay the fine or not, if the cats are still there. That doesn't do anything for us, and it doesn't do anything for them. We, the cats have to be removed. No one in the neighborhood, animal control hasn't done anything to remove the cats since Marilyn's meeting with the mayor. We have a petition with 40 names, at least probably 40 names on it, maybe a dozen households. No one's been approached. Traps need to go into our yards, all of our yards. These cats need to be trapped and brought to the shelter and housed at the shelter and monitored at the shelter and then placed in homes. The fact that we have to live with these cats until animal control finds a place for them is unacceptable. And that's what I'm here to just kind of go over with you guys, to let you know that the judge has thrown it back into your laps. He told us to call the mayor's office. We have already called the mayor's office. Marilyn met with the mayor. We've been here now a number of times. Somebody has to take responsibility for this. And so, I just kind of, you know, wanted you all to know that we've gone through all the steps. We've done everything everybody's asked us to do. And, and we're back here again, asking you to get involved. So, I don't know who, sitting here, is in charge of animal control, but whoever that is, call me. You, you know who I am. Call me, you know, put a trap in my yard, put a trap in all the yards of the people that signed the petition. Everybody wants them gone. You know, I got up at 4:00 in the morning to walk my dog the other day, and I went out in my yard, and there was a cat having a fight with itself. I don't know, scared the crap out of the both of us. We both ran back in the house. I have bear spray with me. I was almost letting it go off in the middle of the night, but that's, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what was happening inside us. So, thanks for listening, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
We're going to reactivate, we had a TNR committee years ago. The, the prior animal control officer did euthanize lots of cats. In fact, as I recall, the mayor pointed that out during his campaign, that under Jamie's reign for eight years, was it the number, 900 dogs and cats were euthanized? That was the old animal control officer. He did not want any animal lovers to be volunteering time there because they could see what he was doing. After he retired and we formed this group, our, our goal was, with TNR, was to not kill all these cats and dogs, but to neuter them so they could not reproduce, inject them. And that was a partial solution. Apparently, we need to do something more. So, I will, following the reorganization in January, I'll reactivate the committee. Joyce Priori was on that committee. She's, she's a caretaker up at Powder Mill. Loretta was on that committee. Janice, I volunteered Janice just to remain on that, to join that committee.
Yes, she did.
Okay. So, we'll reform in January, and we'll see what else we can do, but I do not want to euthanize the cats. Those that are adoptable, that could be domesticated, we've been doing that, not at the rate that will make you guys happy, but it is being done. We'll see what else we can do. Relocate the cats? Where? In someone else's backyard?
That's the thing.
This would be like the, you squeeze the balloon here and it pops up someplace else kind of a thing. We'll look at it. We'll see what else we could possibly do.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, you know, and I'm appreciative of that. We don't want to euthanize the cats either, but there's got to be something other than just a committee that decides they're going to trap and neuter the cats and then bring them back to where they were. This, this cat situation got to 42 cats. On the, on the watch of animal control.
That's because those people kept feeding them.
Oh, absolutely.
If they cut back on the food or eliminate the food.
Yeah.
The problem would go away. The cats would find someplace else to find food.
Well, they're down to probably, I think they're down to about 15. Actually, animal control has said they're down to just over 20 cats at this point. But they watched it go up to 42 cats. So, whatever it is that you decide, there's got to be something in place that says, yeah, when you see more than 10, we can't bring the cats back, you know? First of all, and this is on the word of animal control, Heidi at Animal Control, they could not trap and neuter them faster than they were reproducing. So, that's an issue that needs to be addressed by some sort of a committee, that if you're trapping and neutering two cats, that's fine if there's only two cats living in that yard, but when there are 20 and you can only catch two a month, or you're only showing up once a month to catch, or, you know, whatever, the other 18 are mating.
The other, the number has gone down because Heidi has been taking the kittens, which can be domesticated, and putting them out for adoption. She's been doing everything that she can do under the ordinance that we have today. We'll get together afterwards, and we'll see if there's something else we can do to, to change the ordinance.
Yeah.
As long as it does not entail euthanizing dogs and cats.
That's fine. I mean, I appreciate that, but I do ask that these cats that are living right now in this yard, these 15 cats, be taken away and, and put up at the shelter and fed at the shelter until they can go live somewhere else. We shouldn't have to be living with them. We shouldn't have to be dealing with this while a committee is formed. I mean, this is, we're talking months now before anything's going to happen again. And we've been going through this for a long time, and nothing's been done. I mean, you know, how many meetings have you seen us at? You know, and I think Marilyn met with me here in October.
When you say nothing's been done, though, the colony has been reduced.
Not since we started coming here. The colony's been reduced over the last few years. But, you know, I, we met with Heidi in the summer, and there were, you know, 20, 24, 25 cats there. There's still 24, 25 cats there. I think she told me the other day on the phone, they've placed three. That doesn't make a dent in it, and that's why I say they need to be removed from the neighborhood, housed at the shelter, until they can find a place for them. That's what someone needs to tell them to do. And if they have to put 10 traps in my yard, I'm willing to cooperate. I'll call her every time a cat gets in one of those traps. I will help her trap those cats. Everybody in my neighborhood will help her trap those cats. But, you know, that's not happening, and I don't know why there's not a trap in every house in the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question? How many cats were in the colony originally?
Well, it started years ago with just two that showed up at the house. Two? Yes, and it, you know, grew to 40, the number was 42 from Heidi, and has gone down considerably since then.
So, the problem is, is I think these colonies draw cats, and that's the problem, and they're not.
They do, and Phil mentioned that, that not all the cat, Phil is one of the caregivers, and he mentioned that to the judge, that not all the cats were born there. They just, it's almost like they tell their friends, but they have this sense that, you know, they know where to go.
There's a food supply. If there's a food supply, they will show up.
There's food supply, and they know where to go.
But I think there's something in the ordinance that requires the caregiver to report the cat, and then they're supposed to come test the cat for rabies, and then...
And that may have happened. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Somehow, animal control found out about it, so...
Did they test the 42 cats for rabies?
I couldn't say.
The ones that they captured, they tested, they neutered, they inoculated them, they knocked the ears so they know which ones have been neutered and inoculated.
What did they do with the cats that... What did they do with the cats that were taken? Well, what happened to the-
That are gone.
The forty-two cats? What happened to the other cats?
I, I couldn't say for certain, but Heidi had mentioned they either went somewhere else. They either just, you know, found another colony, went off, or were killed by cars, by coyote, by, you know, by, I don't know if the fox eat cat, but, you know, we have foxes in the neighborhood. She said, "That's what happens," you know, and she said, "You just wait until they're all killed or go somewhere else." So, you know, and that's, you know, I'll be gone by then, you know? So, I don't mean gone from this world. I mean gone from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Marion, and I live at 12 Windy Way. And I wanted to thank you to hear that a committee is being formed, and I want to thank you for having Janice on the committee because she spoke up, and I appreciate that so much when we were first here. This was a totally embarrassing thing for us. You know, we went before a judge. I've never been before a judge before. I never had to go and sit in court and listen to all that, so it was embarrassing. While you're doing your committee, I have a lot to say about that changes on the ordinance. First of all, because we follow the ordinance to a T, and they told us under the nuisance complaint, that has to be totally revised. We had to fill out a form that looked like we had a restraining order against people, which was, that in itself awful. We had to go before a mediator and talk about this, before a judge in another municipality, which was embarrassing. This judge stood there and said to us, "Why are you here over this issue? Where are your council members? Why aren't, why aren't you before the council? Why aren't you talking about animal control?" We didn't want to sit there and tell them. We've been here already, because now we embarrass the council in front of a judge. I want to tell you about that ordinance. Because we went in front of the judge, they told these people that if they don't obey what he says to do, the fine that he is gonna put on them is $2,500 a day. And this is from Judge Scala. So, that's all on record, that he said that. Now, number one, maybe the health department has to go check that house out. The gentleman is in the hospital. They were on a video that they couldn't see hardly talk to bring us to tears because we ended up doing that to these people. And it's just, the judge said, "They have to stop feeding them," okay? He told them that. But it has to come from animal control. "They're not gonna die," the judge said. "Feral cats are scavengers. They will find something to eat someplace and find shelter someplace." So, we're not, which lifted the burden off of us because we don't want these cats dead, but they shouldn't be in there. Also, in your new policy, if that's what you're gonna do, the animal control officer should be checking on it. There is something in the ordinance that says that. If she was really doing her job and checking on it, it wouldn't have gotten to that many cats. So, I just have to say that for us, this whole thing is embarrassing, and I appreciate anything that, any help in the future. But that's my point. In your new commission, there are, those things have to be checked out because we followed the ordinance and we got to the point that I don't want to see these people find, and I don't, now it's a court order? I know, you know, that's kind of awful. It really is awful. But Judge Scala was very good to us and very, you know, talking about the different things and understood fully that no one in this day and age should have to live the way we're living with our security lights going on, with the mess that we decorated the front of our houses for Christmas and had to walk around. Terrible stuff. So, anyway, that's what I have to say when you're doing it, and I appreciate the fact that you are taking action, and we hope it's pretty quick. And I want to wish you, Janice, a lot of luck, and you, Emily, a lot of luck in the future. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Vinnie Cleffey, the property owner of a JCO towing, where they are established at. I just want to let everybody know I was vindicated from all charges, but I'm not here to discuss that. I'm here because recently, there was a catastrophic current event out in Kentucky, and we've been trying to raise money, not raise donations to send out with a fifty-three-foot trailer out to Kentucky to help the people in need. With that being said, in 2017, Parsippany and a JCO joined hands, and we helped the good people of Florida out, in Jacksonville, Florida. And we filled up a fifty-three-foot trailer, and we sent it out there. I, myself, and another coworker, we drove out there and we helped these people out in need. I've collected a lot of stuff, but I haven't collected enough to fill a fifty-three-foot trailer. So, with that being said, I'm inviting Parsippany to join hands with a JCO services and see if we could fill up this fifty-three-foot trailer to help these people in need that are out in Kentucky that have nothing, except everything they've ever had is devastated. If people want to come by, drop anything off at a JCO towing, and we could help out people in need and work on a positive note and get on a different page, I would appreciate it, and so would Jason Cleffey, the owner of a JCO towing. He couldn't be present tonight. And the reason why I'm here, I didn't come here to discuss anything. It's very hard when you're trying to do a fundraiser and you're told you're a racist company. And, I mean, everybody was entitled to their opinion, and thank God for the detectives of Parsippany Police Department that did their due diligence and wrote a very methodical report. I believe it helped us out clearing that, that part of the slander. So, it's, what I'm asking is if Parsippany could announce in a paper or something that we could join hands, if you're willing, and help the good people of Kentucky, and we could get that trailer out there. I was gonna leave on the 23rd to see if I could make some kids' Christmas and some families a little bit better. I, myself, donated about nine skids of water, and we have paper towels, anything, clothing, they have nothing. So, that's what I'm here for tonight, and I want to thank every one of you people for sitting up here and serving the community of Parsippany. I am not a resident of Parsippany, but I'm a proud owner of our Parsippany, so I hope that allows me to be part of Parsippany.
What is the address of your establishment?
1029 Edwards Road, Parsippany. I'm right across the street from the Wawa. And we're looking for anything that would make somebody's life a little easier. I have fifty-three-foot trailer. I'm like, I'd say with the water, a quarter of a way, a quarter away. I'm looking to put about forty-five, fifty thousand pounds on the trailer, and I'll personally deliver it to Kentucky.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and have a blessed holiday, all of you.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
My name is Bob Venedzia. I live at 102 Brook Long Drive. Before I get to my main topic, I'd like to second a suggestion that Councilmember Peterson made at the last meeting. She proposed that the council should authorize an independent audit comparing the cost of the state-administered health plan versus the cost of Parsippany's self-insured health plan. Since Parsippany already performs annual cost comparisons of insurance companies that provide, that provide vision, dental, and prescription coverage, it seems reasonable to do a cost comparison of healthcare as well, especially if one has not been done within the last five years or so. So, I agree with Councilmember Peterson and ask that you authorize the independent audit that she proposed. Now, back to the main topic of water. First, I'd like to thank the administration for its prompt response to the water-related questions that I asked at the last meeting. Most of the answers were straightforward and factual, but one of them conflicts with statements that were made during the council meeting. As I understand it, there is ample water in our aquifer, and DEP's maximum-approved share of that water for Parsippany is more than enough to meet existing needs as well as the future needs of both COA and non-COA development. But unfortunately, because of recent problems with well equipment, Parsippany's water system cannot pump out anything near its maximum allotted amount. As explained by the township attorney, the DEP has a second metric called the firm capacity cap, which takes into account how much water our existing system can actually produce. When Parsippany's water usage started to approach the firm capacity cap, the court, by law, intervened to protect the water needs of new COA housing development projects. So, regarding new development, the court order to provide water first to COA housing is directly related to Parsippany's potential violation of the firm capacity cap. It has nothing to do with any unmet COA obligation that Parsippany may have. The attorney then explained how the court order would remain in effect until the township took corrective action by increasing water production to a threshold point satisfactory to the court. So, whether the administration wants to acknowledge it or not, Parsippany does have a water shortfall problem. This is why the water department is now rehabilitating several wells with the goal of increasing production. Until that task is completed, and that may take a few years, we're stuck with the problem of a non-elected state bureaucrat deciding what does and doesn't get built in Parsippany. And meanwhile, Jersey City is cashing in by supplying Parsippany with the extra water that we need to service our existing users without exceeding the firm capacity cap. So, until that court order is lifted, I ask the council to provide a brief update to residents on our water system on at least a quarterly basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Komiac, Oneida Avenue, Lake Hiawatha. On the cat issue, I have some photographs here I'd like to present to the council. There's a cat colony, including houses, and it's being fed on a regular basis. And not only is this person feeding the cats, they use plastic and styrofoam, and they're actually trashing the park. I've cleaned it up several times over the years, and I brought it to the attention of animal control. And from what I can see, this particular habitat has turned into a cat village. So, I, I have cats that roam my neighborhood, but you can tell by their condition that they're probably pets. They're just roaming around. So, rather than clean the little kitty box, you send the cat outside, and the cat, I'm sure, has all kinds of adventures. But there's two types of carrying capacity. There's a biological and a social carrying capacity. So, a biological capacity is the quality, diversity of the environment, the niches, the food available, and the predation. So, these cats theoretically in Parsippany could turn into a million cats. One-on-one doesn't make two, as we all know. But this social carrying capacity has obviously been reached in Parsippany. Now, when we deal with animals in wildlife control, I hate to say it, but the answer is they're dispatched to the other world. Now, it may sound cruel, but cats and dogs are not the only animals that, you know, deserve rights in this world. And once they reach certain conditions, like I heard from this woman, I hate to say it, but the solution may be that they have to be euthanized in some cases. And I, you know, I don't want to sound cruel, but that's what they do with, you know, other forms of wildlife for, for good reasons. I know a guy in Bluefield that was a cat freak, and the town told him, "If you don't..." He had, his house was a mess. Cat waste, everything all over the place. They gave him a choice, and guess what? The cats got euthanized, but it was for the, the health, health of everybody. So, if you let something get out of control, and cats, cats are out of control. I'd like to say that the council, I, I think, has improved over the last four years. We've, everything, I hope it continues to build on advances that were already made. For example, we stay in the Highlands, and Mayor Soriano supposedly was the first mayor who ever participated in the Troy Meadows event with the cleanup and the bats and everything. And Troy Meadows has been a part of our master plan supposedly, but there's been a lot of conflict, and I think it's about time that we got closer to that wildlife resource in our town to improve our knowledge of nature diversity and other forms of life that we do share on this search. I do thank you for getting us closer to Troy Meadows, and once again, your good work getting us back in the Highlands. I wanted to ask the JCO, but they're gone. Maybe you can-
Get our front office.
Well, I'll ask them. But, you know, when there's an accident, remember, every time there's an accident, they never clean. I, I'm sure it's not just the JCO. And the same thing, when employees are, they'll cut, they'll cut the lawn, it'll cut a park, and they don't police the litter. They cut it into pieces. All these things hopefully can, can improve. But when you, you send to the reported concern, and then it says it was resolved, many times it's only resolved for that one-
I suggest you bring that to the new administration.
I will. I will. I plan on-
Nick, you have thirty seconds.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say that I hope something can be done with the cats. A last resort would be the euthanasia, but if that's what has to be done in a, in a, in a situation, then that's what has to be done. So, you know, it gets to the point where cats and dogs, they almost have more rights than people. But anyway, can I give you these?
This is right by the community center across from the parks, and this is the kind of thing that's going on.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else want to speak?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, that is him.
Yeah.
There he is.
Yeah.
That is just a gentleman.
Hey, guys.
Hi.
My name is Tom Jones. I'm just gonna keep this short and sweet. Janice, Emily-
Excuse me, Tom. We need your address, please.
26 Childs Road, Bernardsville. Emily, Janice, thank you so much for everything you've done. You know, I haven't spent that much time in politics. I have to say that it feels good to know that you guys made a difference and that I was part of doing so. So, thank you very much. Best of luck for the future.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Okay. See, anyone else come forward? I'm seeing a motion to close?
Motion.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Okay. Seeing no one else come forward? I'll have them taking, I'm saying a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms., um, Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, ordinance is for second reading. Loretta?
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-seven. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, clarifying township policy related to retired health benefits. The notice of ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-seven was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on December the second, twenty-twenty-one, and introduced at the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-seven, be heard in their second and final reading by the title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-seven, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Ms., um, Grignani.
Yes.
Uh, well, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Floor is open on this ordinance only.
See no one coming forward. Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one, twenty-seven, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-seven, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-eight. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the fees for various licensing provisions of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. The notice for ordinance two thousand twenty-one, colon, twenty-eight was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on December second, two thousand twenty-one, and introduced at the November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance two thousand twenty-one, colon, twenty-eight, be heard in their second and final reading by title only, made by myself.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to open the public hearing on this ordinance, this ordinance only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only. Seeing no one else?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and the notice of final passage said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance two thousand twenty-one, twenty-eight, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one, twenty-nine. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter one, two, four, Construction Codes Uniform and Chapter eight, four, four, five, fees compilation of the Code of Parsippany, Troy Hills. The notice for ordinance twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-nine is published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on December second, twenty-twenty-one, and introduced at the November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, twenty-nine, be heard in their second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one, twenty-nine only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Floor is open for this ordinance only. Seeing no one?
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that the notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, thirty. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter two, ninety, Parks, Recreation Areas, and Public Lands and Chapter A, four, forty-five, file compilation of the Code of Parsippany, Troy Hills. The notice for this ordinance, twenty-twenty-one, colon, thirty, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of Township, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on December second, two thousand twenty-one, and introduced on November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, thirty, to be heard in its second and final reading.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, uh, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll, oh, no, Ms. Grignani, sorry. Uh, roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one, colon, thirty.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DePiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.